Oh.
Hey Bob.
Okay, we're all set. We're all set, honey.
Okay, welcome everyone.
Who are you? Do I know you?
Very funny, very funny. Welcome everybody to the November 17th, 2021 meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission. We will open with the roll call, Mr. Yurice.
Here.
Ms. Hossetter.
Here.
Mr. Kiyokio.
Here.
Mr. Sylvain.
Here.
Mr. Renz and Mr. Haas are absent as alternates and Chairman Finaldi is here, so we do not need to seat any alternates this evening. Commission members, the minutes of the November 3rd, 2021 meeting were previously distributed. Unless there's any comments or discussion, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Pick one.
Pick one in a second, Joanne. It's up to you. Joel Helen. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of November 3rd, 2021. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are approved. The next regularly scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission is November 1st, 2021. And before we move on to the rest of our agenda, just briefly, the virtual Zoom meeting intro. This meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission is being held on Zoom as a virtual meeting, even though this meeting is a virtual meeting, members of the public and interested parties continue to have the opportunity to participate in the meeting in a couple of different ways. You can participate via Zoom and see the audio and the video, or you can call in by phone and participate via audio only. Just a heads up, if you call in, we may have to mute you and unmute your phone to avoid an echo. Instructions on how to participate in the meeting appear on the City of Danbury website. And all of the documents and materials that apply to the matters to be discussed during this meeting, including the agenda, are also available on the City of Danbury website. As always, if you have any questions, please contact the City of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department. As a reminder, the entire meeting will be posted on and can be seen on the Danbury website as well. We will follow the posted agenda as per standard practice. If prior to the meeting, any questions or comments on agenda items were submitted via email to Sharon Colletro, those comments will be read during the appropriate portion of the meeting. Okay, let's keep moving forward. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no continuation of public hearings this evening, so we'll move right to old business for discussion and possible action. Nijame Plaza LLC, application for special exception for site plan approval to permit storage of concrete aggregates or manufacture of concrete and concrete products stored by two minutes products, storage or sale of building materials and storage of construction equipment, EJ Pool Industrial Site in the IG 80 Zone, 44 Payne Road, N12004, special exception number 776. As shown on our agenda, there will be no action taken on this application during this meeting. So unless there's any discussion or anything else, I guess, Jennifer, I need a motion to table, correct? Motion to continue.
Yes, please.
Any more?
Motion to continue, Nijame. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Yurice, I think that was Mr. Kiyokio on the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The matter of Nijame Plaza will be continued to our next meeting. Moving down to the referrals part of our agenda, there's an A3A referral petition of the City of Danbury by Sharon B. Colletro, Planning Director to amend Sections 3C, 10B2, 10C4A2 of the zoning regulations. Amendments pursuant to Public Act 2129 opt out of parking requirements, amend zoning permit fee schedule to add provision authorizing charging of fee for expert consultant. And amend language in additional requirements for approval of special exceptions and special permits relative to use of the word "character." The public hearing is scheduled for December 14th, 2021. Sharon, are you going to handle this one?
I am.
Please.
Sure, thank you. For the record, Sharon Colletro, I'm the Planning Director of the City of Danbury. So, Public Act 2129 was approved in June of this year. It provides for several revisions to the State Enabling Act that affect the land use regulations, and these amendments have to do with three aspects of Public Act 2129 that became effective as of October 1st. So I'm going to go through them one by one. The first one is to opt out of the reduced parking requirements. So the act provides changes to 8-2 that basically says you can't require more than one parking space for each studio or one bedroom dwelling, or more than two parking spaces for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms unless a municipality opts out in accordance with the provisions that are established in the Public Act. So we are proposing an amendment to Section 3C of our zoning regulations, which would be subsection 6, to opt out of that language. And I provided the reasons in my memo dated, or my staff report dated November 9. And you probably, as more than anyone else, understands what the parking regulations are, so I'll just go through that quickly. So the parking requirements are provided in Section 8C of our regs. For one, two, and three family dwellings, we require two spaces per unit and one space for two resident employees, if there are any. And then for apartment houses, gardens, row houses, and mobile homes, the requirements, again, are two spaces per dwelling unit plus one per two resident employee, except in the case of efficiency units, which are basically studios, for which only one space is required, and except in the case of a one bedroom, for which one and a half spaces are required. And then we also, for the multifamily, require one per four parking space for four units, except in the central business district. And again, as you know, we've recognized over the years that the cost of parking increases the cost of development and the redevelopment of the site, and so to incentivize development, particularly in the downtown area, we relaxed some of those parking requirements in 2011. I was getting a little echo, sorry. In the DRZ zone, so in that zone, the requirements are one and a half for a two-bedroom instead of two, with no visitor spaces in the RH3-zoned properties, which there are some in the DRZ. And there's no required onsite employee parking where employers provide parking in public spaces regardless of the distance. And as you recall, there are some distance requirements in the regulations. So we did adopt incentives to reduce the parking requirements, and again, those were based on our needs and also to try to incentivize that development. And while we recognize, you know, the state, and we commend the state for trying to do this, you know, to 169 towns, we think we're better suited to manage our own parking and our own parking requirements based on our demographics and our conditions associated with it and our economic needs. And we're aware of the growth patterns in our community, and we would just be better off, and we've, from our perspective, we would prefer to regulate our parking, you know, based on our own, basically our own demographics. And so I'm proposing to the commission that we opt out of that regulation, which became effective October 1st. This is similar, the opt-out provision is similar to the provision, and we handled it a couple of years ago with these temporary healthcare structures, which the state said you must, you know, you can't prohibit unless you go through this opt-out procedure. It's a dual procedure, so once we get through the zoning commission, obviously with your recommendation, I have to go to the legislative body, which is the city council. So it's kind of a two-step process. Again, you know, relative to parking, our needs are different than someone else's needs. Every, you know, there's 169 towns, I, again, the state, I commend the state for trying to do this, but, you know, we should be able to manage our own requirements. So that's number one. Number two, so that's the change to 3C to add 3C6. The Second Amendment, again, is a revision to, in the Public Act 2129, it's a revision to the Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-1C. Wherein, they are now allowing a municipality by regulation to provide that anyone that is applying to the Planning or Zoning Commission, the ZBA, or the Inland Wetlands Commission for approval, to pay the costs of reasonable fees associated with the review of a project. And again, you guys have the most experience with this of any commission, I think, in Danbury, where we don't have the technical staff, we don't have technical staff on staff or city employees to be able to review that. Case in point, you've done this for multiple floodplain analyses where the applicant has agreed to pay the cost of an outside consultant. And this just actually allows us to solidify that in the regulations and gives us the ability, so we don't have to kind of say, are you willing to do it? As we have with you guys in the past, we just, it's an amendment to 10B2, which sets up the procedures for which we can require the applicant to pay the costs associated with a specific review. Again, only wherein you don't have the technical expertise on staff in the City of Danbury to do that, to do that work. And the floodplain is a perfect analysis. It's a very specialized drainage analysis, floodplain, HECRAS analysis, Jen can walk you through all of that. Very specific, and we just don't have a staff, we don't have staff personnel to do that. So we're proposing to add that language to Section 10B2. And then finally, the Public Act, we're proposing in Section 10C4A2, which are the special exception slash special permit, additional conditions of approval and findings that you need to meet to address the word "character", which you may or may not have heard in a lot of discussions about land use regulations, changes pursuant to 2129, and concerns about what the word "character" means. So to clarify that, we've deleted that word and added some very specific language relative to, you know, what the finding must be. And again, that is, I'm just gonna, let me just flip to the page. That is, we would delete the word, again, the condition is, you must find, and/or the zoning commission for a special permit, that the proposed use is designed in a manner which is compatible with the character, that's how it reads now, of character of the district. And so we're proposing to get rid of the "compatible with the character" and say it must be designed in a manner which is in conformity with the physical characteristics and structures of the neighborhood and district. So it kind of takes away the ambiguity of like what "character" means. Yeah. I can't really be any more specific than that. Again, there was concerns about really what that word meant in terms of race and a lot of other, you know, characteristics. So we just think that these amendments are important. There were a lot of changes, and we'd rather just regulate ourselves and make our amendments applicable to Danbury rather than kind of the broad brush of what PA, some aspects of PA 2129 did.
Thanks Sharon.
I will take any questions, yeah.
Any questions for Sharon, Mr. Kiyokio?
Yes, two, basically two questions. So on the first one, understanding all the different demographics in each of the various towns in Connecticut, I get that. So just, I guess, for background or understanding, why does the state want to, why are they want to, I guess, address the parking requirements, or why do they want to do that?
So my understanding was that this, the this requirement was part of some proposed changes that had to do with, you know, some incentivizing some developments in TOD and higher density and requirements that were associated with that, that actually didn't make it through the the process of consideration of the Public Act. And so when certain things were cut out of the Public Act, certain things were kind of sort of left over. And then at the end of the day, it just kind of sort of didn't jive. And may have been, again, important if you were trying to, in the overall scheme of trying to incentivize development around TOD areas or transit or things like that, but that part of that bill came out and this part stayed. So if it was supposed to be considered together and half of it left, then the other half kind of, I get it, but it doesn't necessarily make sense for everybody. And I can tell you that there are instances where, I mean, we're getting building permits requests and, you know, for seven-bedroom homes. And so you're telling us that we can't even consider whether or not we want to raise the number of parking spaces on a seven-bedroom home? Because, you know, we have to follow this unless we opt out. If you opt out, you can create kind of your own. And that's what I'm saying to you. I think we're better suited to manage ourselves than the state managing us. If one is good, one is good. We'll go to one, but let us figure that out on our own. Don't mandate to us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I agree that we know better for our area. I was just curious as to why the state was trying to mandate this.
That's how I understand it. It was all wrapped up into, this bill was huge, and during the course of, you know, legislative discussion and negotiation and things like that, what actually got adopted wasn't exactly what everybody saw in the beginning. And, you know, that's just the process. But, you know, it's like they didn't take the period away from, you know, the sentence when they took half of the sentence away. And now it doesn't make sense on its own. It really doesn't make sense on its own.
Yeah, okay. And then on the other one, on the character issue, is it kind of the same thing, the state's trying to, is it based on some lawsuits, I guess, or is this, what's the basis for this? I mean, because to me, a little, the ambiguity is good for us. Maybe not so good if, you know, you're the applicant, I guess. But, you know, if you want to kind of control your area, the ambiguity is a little bit better for us. So just kind of the background for that change.
Yeah, again, I think it's just what does "character" mean? And "character", I mean, to all of us, I think I can say, and I'm comfortable with saying, has nothing to do with the race or anything else. But, you know, in some aspects, in some people's perceptions, that it might mean "character" isn't the same race as another, or a use or something that would allow, and they're trying to, they're trying to resolve some of the old inequities that zoning led to racial discrimination, racial non-inclusiveness and things like that. Nothing in my, my many decades of planning work has ever, has it ever come into any community that I've been involved with. But it's kind of the thing now, and so.
Okay.
That's where it's coming.
Yeah, okay. It just feels like maybe the same structure seems a bit limiting because there could maybe be other factors, but I guess if, I don't know, you've probably thought it through, so I'll leave it to kind of your expertise there, but it just seems a bit limiting to me, but it'd be nice to hear if anybody else has other opinions on that.
No, I would add, Bob, if I may, I agree with you. Sometimes ambiguity is good, it gives you a little leeway. But when Sharon read what was going to replace the word "character", you know, that was a little ambiguous. It still left some room for judgment, so it's really a semantics argument. I don't know what's so bad about the word "character", but when she read what was replacing it, it was okay with me. And I see a hand up. Mr. Yurice, I believe, has a hand up.
Yes, sir. Just throw my two cents in here on changing the word "character". It's been there for decades. If it ain't broke, don't fix it because you think somebody is going to come in and say, oh, wait, "character" means this. It's dog chasing a tail. You change it to this, somebody will complain about this. Just listen, characters will work forever around here. Let's just leave it alone.
Well, if I can just respond to that, so what the Public Act actually says is that the zoning regulations, and I'm going to quote, "shall not be applied to deny, to deny any land use application, including for any site plan approval, special permit, or special exception or the zoning approval on the basis of, A, the district's character, unless the character is expressly articulated in their regulations by clear and explicit physical standards for site work and structures." So I tried to turn, take the word "character" out and turn it back to physical characteristics because we can't today say, you couldn't today say, "I'm denying it because it's out of character." You can't do it today because as of October 1st, you cannot deny it on the basis of "character", unless you.
Okay, it's the same old story. Hartford stepped on its feet and we're paying the price.
Yeah, yes, yes and no. I just think there's a heightened sensitivity to what some people may perceive as what "character" means. And again, I mean, from this commission and all the commissions I worked with, it never has it meant what I think, you know, people, some people may perceive it to mean, but they want to kind of like nip it in the bud and say, "It's not about race, it's not about income, it's about, you know, the physical characteristics. Was something designed in a manner which is totally out of character", things like that. And so that's why it's just better for us to get rid of the word "character" in that, from my perspective and Corporation Council.
I'm going to say, okay, under protest, but this is like changing the Atlanta Braves' name because somebody perceives that Braves is going to insult some Native American, but when they ask the Indians, you know what they said? Shut your mouth, go get a beer and watch us play it. We're the Atlanta Braves.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, Commissioner, but this is what the legislature's dealt us, so.
All right.
Okay, okay, I got it. I just got to figure out how to turn off my hand.
So I, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Helen.
Yeah, so I have two things, maybe on this, the first being just a follow-up on what we were just discussing. I guess the question for us might be, and I think Sharon thought long and hard about this, is her wording, conformity to physical, you know, structures, physical criteria for, you know, physically mapped to the area, that kind of thing. Are we covered like we would have been if we just had "character" remain? I mean, pretty much. And I would say, I think so, because we are looking at, you know, the buildings and the, you know, the, whatever improvements we're making, they are physical in nature. And I guess so it comes down to, do they conform to the, and, you know, it's hard not to use the word "character", but do they conform to the criteria that is the trend of the neighborhood? And so if we can use those words and come up with the same limits and uses, instead of using the word "character", do we all agree that we probably can use those words? And I think we're covered? I'm just a question, or is there anything that's really left out of that replacement language that, you know, is, we need to address? So I.
For example, if there were maybe, you know, two-story industrial buildings all along this, and somebody comes by in the middle and wants to put up a five-story industrial building, is that, that's not in conformity with the character anymore, right? Or the structures, right? Or is that? So we, I guess we could deny it if we wanted to or not deny it, or?
Right. So in other words, I don't think. I think it's different from "character". I don't think it's different from how you're using and applying the word "character" when you're thinking about, does it meet this additional requirement? Because, again, in my experience with this commission and all the commissions over my career, it's never meant anything other than, is it out of whack, right? Not, is it, are we limiting someone's ability to do something based on race or income or anything like that? And so we're trying, and I get it, it's frustrating that, you know, for all of us too, but this is what they've dealt us. So to me, I don't think you're losing anything by the changes in the way we've proposed it. And we've also, just so you know, you know, we've consulted with, you know, AR attorneys and other attorneys at TCM relative to kind of this kind of language. So I think this gets you out of what anybody could perceive the word "character" mean, other than, does it fit in from a physical standpoint? We're not talking about other things.
Is it compatible with the other structures in the area?
Right.
Okay, so we think we're good there? I don't, I guess that was the question I had. And then the other question I have is, so we're opting out on this first part, restricting parking. Do we anticipate any sort of pushback by the state on this, or is this something that's legitimately going to be accepted by them without any reservation?
We have the ability to opt out. They gave us the ability to opt out in the Public Act. Whether that means, oh, there's a target on their back, like why are they opting out? I think our explanation is sufficient and justifiable, that we're not, you know, Enfield, we're not New London, we're not Bridgewater, we're not Norwalk. So let us figure out if that, if those requirements, or what the requirements need to be to suit what's going on in our own community. In other words, I get what you're trying to do, but everybody's different, and we're best suited understanding our own demographics and what's going on to regulate ourselves. That's all.
So if they gave us the option to opt out, then there's not going to be any ramifications in terms of, we can't give you funding for this or that because you opted out.
No, no.
Thank you.
And we have the ability to make any changes we want if we opt out. If you don't opt out, this is what you have. And Jen can't review a site plan and ask for two spaces per unit or on a two-bedroom in an apartment complex or anything, you know, or anything else, unless we do that.
One size does not fit all.
Exactly. And I'm not saying their numbers are wrong. I'm just saying, don't hamstring us. Let us figure it out on our own. Because we're not, you know, other communities aren't dealing what we're dealing with.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Sharon, Commission members?
Got my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joel, I should be paying more attention to that. Go ahead.
I just want to go on the record. I've been on this Plan Commission for 15 years, and not once in that time did the word "character" describe to me anything other than the size, nature, and occupancy and architecture of the neighborhood. It had nothing to do with people. It had nothing to do with anything else. It was, does it look right sitting there? And, okay, anyway, I'm on record.
Well-stated, Senator Yurice.
That's very funny.
Is there anyone else running for Senator that would like to make a declaration here? Okay, all right. Well, listen, this is a referral, so we're going to need a motion for a positive or a negative referral to our friends at zoning. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a positive referral on both counts. Or if we have to do them one at a time, can we do them?
No, no, this is one referral, so.
Okay, then a positive referral on both counts.
Okay, positive referral from Joel to a second from Helen, I believe, I saw her wave her hand.
Yes, yes, second, second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for a positive referral. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
This matter gets a positive referral and I apologize to my fellow commission members. I was remiss. We have one other referral, uh, to eight two four. I should have announced that at the beginning of the meeting. I did not. So this is what happens. I'm a little rusty. Um, shame on me. But in any event, and again, by the way, while I say that, thank you to Joel Yurice for filling in for me uh, for those past couple of meetings. Joel, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
As I mentioned, it's an eight two four referral. It's a, it's a referral from the November 2021 city council meeting. Um, Jennifer distributed the uh, report earlier and it's a proposed disposition of property three Post Office Street. Most of you remember it as the old Tuxedo Junction building. And um, Jen, are you or Sharon handling this one?
I'm handling it.
Fire away, please.
Okay, thank you. So um, you have my staff report that I sent out this morning. Um, council uh, received a request from Mayor Cavo to convene an ad hoc committee uh, to consider the disposition of city-owned land located at three Post Office Street, also known as Post Office Walk. Uh, the property is approximately 7,400 square feet in size. It's located in the CBD as well as the DRZ, which is the downtown revitalization zone, overlay zone. Uh, the building itself is, uh, which, as Arnie said, uh, was the old Tuxedo Junction, uh, is approximately 6,900 square feet in size. Uh, the first floor is 6,600 square feet. There's a partial second floor that's only 274 square feet. Uh, the site fronts on Post Office Street. Um, and several decades ago, it was converted from Post Office Street to the pedestrian walkway we know it as today. Um, the property was purchased uh, by the city in 2017. We subsequent, subsequently issued an RFP to lease the property for business which serves the Danbury community. Uh, we'd only had one response, unfortunately. Um, upon vetting of that proposal by city officials, the proposal was ultimately rejected. Uh, disposition of this property for redevelopment furthers the, the intent of the TOD study, uh, fosters economic development and with proper design, uh, will help activate adjacent public space. And uh, any future use of the structure would require significant public capital, public capital investment uh, for which um, a, a positive economic return appears uh, to be limited, given the fact that, you know, we haven't gotten any proposals for use of that property. Uh, so for these reasons, staff has no objection to the disposition of the property in the manner authorized by the Code of Ordinances. Any questions?
Questions?
I have a map too. If anyone wants to see a map, um, I can show that as well if it, if it helps.
Questions for Jennifer?
Yes. In the very end of your staff report, and I think you read it just, just now. Uh, staff has no objection to the disposition of the property and manner designated. I don't know. If, if we're going to dispose of it, it has value. Otherwise, we're going to give it away and have somebody tear down the building piece by piece. So to say it has no economic value is a contradiction in terms. Somebody wants to buy it. If, if you think it's no value, I'll buy it for a dollar. I'll put my bid in now. So I, I don't, I don't see this one RFP being turned down as a mandate that, that this property has no value. I mean, you're right in the heart of the entertainment district. You've got new apartments going in just, you know, block away. Uh, we're revitalizing downtown, which would bring business into downtown. And I don't think it follows that uh, that it's not of economic value to the city. I, I, I think we have to keep it.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't imply that there, it didn't have any value to it. I just said that any future use of the structure would require significant public investment for which a positive economic return appears to be limited. Like I didn't say it didn't have any value to it.
Keep reading, keep, keep reading. It's after what, what you said afterwards about the disposition.
For these reasons, staff has no objection to the disposition of the subject property in the manner authorized by the Code of Ordinance.
Well, I think what Jennifer's saying is that the city shouldn't be in the real estate business. I mean, it's not, there, there's, there's nothing we can do. If this building needs to be revitalized or renovated or reimagined or whatever they're doing up at the Matrix or the Summit, the city shouldn't be doing that. We should sell it and let, let a private industry do it. What, what are we going to do? We've tried hard to find somebody to go in that building. We failed. It's a tough location. Um, I, I understand what you're saying. It just, we shouldn't be responsible for doing a marketing study and, and, and trying to lease it. We did our best. It didn't work. Let's get rid of it and let somebody else renovate it.
Well, you know, I, I, I say, I'll say, I'm not going to object to it, but I better understand you're just saying, go ahead and dispose of it in a manner consistent with our, our public acts. Um, you're not, they're not suggesting in this referral that they sell it. Is that correct?
Sure, they're going to, Dan, of course, we're trying to sell it, right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
That's the whole point. Sell it to somebody that wants to fix it up, you know? I will add this, Joel.
Okay.
I, I, I got hired, I moved to, well, I moved up in Denver my whole life, but when I got hired in 1985 at the settle agency, I was at 248 Main Street, right across the street from Tuxedo Junction. And I'm telling you, 86, 87, you could not get a table there for lunch. The place was packed.
I saw that Domino's there.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw Joan Jett there.
Wow.
I saw the Ramones there. So I mean.
I didn't see much there myself.
I mean, there used to be a line all the way across Ivy Street to get in that place. I mean, it was jammed all the time and it was really a, a lot of fun to be down there at that time. And then things changed. I guess the drinking age might have changed. I don't know. But uh, I, I, I'm hopeful that some private person can buy it and get it going again. It would be great. But I just don't think the city should be doing it. The city can't be having Ramones counter. It just can't.
Now, I'm, I'm not implying that we should, not implying that we should. But um, when, when was that RFP issued?
Yeah.
Yep, roughly.
It was issued in October 2018.
Okay, thanks. I missed what was issued.
The RFP.
Thank you.
The fourth sale sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I just want to, um, I, I just want to introduce a, you know, something else going on on that, sort of that block, which is the, is it a savings bank of Danbury is going to put up a four-story structure, like Caddy Corner? To, and I don't think the footprint includes, it, Jennifer, the footprint does not include Tuxedo Junction spot, right? It's just, it's not, doesn't go there. But, but because that's going up, you would think that the value for this property now would be, you know, like increased a lot. So I, I think with that in mind, I, I think it's a good idea to have it disposed to a private developer. And um, I would, I would venture to say perhaps, you know, with, with the other plans and right in the same area that it would, you know, would be a good thing to do. I just, just saying.
Thank you, Helen.
If I'm wrong, but I believe it is their, their open intention to buy that property as well.
Well, there you go.
Good. Yeah, I was excited.
Tell Roger Palazzo to put his negotiating hat on.
He's the guy to do it. He's the guy to do it. Okay, any other questions for Jennifer on this referral?
Well.
Oh.
Motion for a positive referral.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I am, I kind of agree with Joel and uh, and based on our, our meeting yesterday, it seems as though there's, there's a lot of activity for, for space and uh, downtown area. And it seems to me that um, I would think an RFP today versus 2018 would, would, um, it would be a lot of different response, I would think. And it seems as though this might have a lot more value than it did in, in uh, in 2018, given, you know, the, the, seems like uh, increased activity for downtown. So, you know, I, I don't know if it's a better situation to sell it versus doing another RFP to lease because, you know, an investor come, could come in and, and, you know, revitalize that and, and lease it from the, from the, from the city, as well as buy it, I guess. But uh, it just seems like it would have a lot more value today than it did in 2018.
Call me back in about 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just chime in, just, just uh, for a matter of fact. So we, we, we reissued the RFP for the lot on delay, on um, Liberty and Delay, the surface parking lot, which the city owns. It's a vacant surface parking lot. We issued an RFP in conjunction with, you know, um, trying to incentivize development in accordance with all of our plans. We, we did it, we, in fact, today, the bids were due. We got no bids again. So if the city um, has somebody that has some interest in this property, in the Tuxedo Junction property, then um, I would say um, as, as Jennifer indicated in her memo, that we, we can proceed, we should proceed to try to dispose it. I don't, we're not looking at taking any uh, anything less than obviously what uh, in my understanding for the city invested in it. But to make that building kind of functional needs a lot of money. Um, i- i- if you've been in it, you know what it looks like. It's a big bar and a big, and you know, a, 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 a big assembly space. Um, and it's not conducive to kind of, you know, to meet the needs of, of many uses. So um, if, if the city wants to entertain someone who wants to purchase the property, um, including um, the savings bank Danbury, then it goes back on the city tax rolls. Um, and they, whether they incorporate it into their development, um, they, they utilize it for something um, rather than the city, you know, again, um, uh, utilizing uh, public money to try to, you know, get that building up to speed and then leasing it for a dollar, which ob- obviously makes, it makes no sense. So that, more investment for no return is, is basically what, you know, we were up against in 2018. I don't think that's changed.
Mr. Chairman, one last question. What, what was the referral? What, what did the, the, were we asked to opine on?
You were asked to, uh, the referral, again, it's an, it's an eight two four referral and it's from the city council and it's to give our opinion. Remember, this is only a referral, folks. We're not.
Well, I understand. I'm just asking what the referral asked us to opine on.
To opine on whether or not it's a good idea to sell this building. That's what we're opining on. I say, sell it to an entrepreneur, just like we were talking about the summit before the meeting started. The Matrix was dying, a, a, an entrepreneur bought it, reimagined it, and now it's going great. We need an entrepreneur over there to do it, not the city. The city is not supposed to be doing that. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, uh, motion to approve.
Positive referral, Helen?
Yes, positive referral.
Okay, motion for a positive second by Mr. Kyokyo, I think it was.
Sylvain.
Perry. Perry.
Sylvain, my apologies, Perry. Okay, motion made and seconded for a positive referral. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. This matter gets a positive referral.
Nay. Nay, put me in there.
We got a nay out of Senator Yurice. Okay.
I think you need to do, Mr. Chairman, because there's a negative, you need to do a roll call vote.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Yurice.
Nay.
Ms. Hofstadter.
Yes.
Mr. Kyokyo.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvain.
Yes.
If Chairman Finaldi votes yes, it, it gets a positive referral by a vote of four to one. Thank you. Okay, we have nothing under, um, actually, under correspondence, you'll see our meeting schedule for 2022.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can you, um, under new business, can I read? We received, of course, as soon as we sent out the agenda, we had two applications come in. Can I read those?
Please.
Okay, under new business. So there's two items to be added. Uh, Alpha Professional Building LLC, application for special exception revised site plan approval for conversion of professional office space to medical office space in the CA 80 Zone, 34 Mill Plain Road, SC 783. The public hearing scheduled for January 5th, 2022, our first meeting of 2022. Um, the second item is 46 Mill Plain LLC, application for special exception site plan approval for mixed use development, West Con Park in the CA 80, RMF 4 and RA 40 zones. There's a lot here. Um, proposed uses in the CA 80 Zone, retail professional office, bank with drive-through restaurant. Uh, number two, proposed uses in the RMF 4 Zone, apartment house, housing incentive option and congregate housing. Uh, number three, proposed use in the RA 40 Park Playground Rec Facility. And number four, cumulative uses generating over 500 vehicle trips per day.
And I'm sorry, Jen, you're adding, you're, you're reading these for, for, for reference only?
I'm, I'm, you, I'm reading these for new business. This would normally, this would normally show up as new business. But because, yeah, because we released the agenda prior to these coming in, I just want to acknowledge receipt. So then the clock starts ticking. The commission's officially accepted these applications.
Gotcha. Okay, so.
So this property, I just want to finish. The property is located at 3 to 13 Mill Plain Road in Amity Lane. Um, I won't read the assessor's lot numbers. Uh, the special exception number 784, public hearing scheduled for January 19th, 2022.
Okay, everybody got that? So when we put out the agenda, there was nothing under new business. And then, of course, no sooner do we put out the agenda, a couple of things showed up and Jennifer just added those to the record. We don't have to take any action.
We don't need it. No.
Right.
We don't need any motion or anything to acknowledge it, right?
No, again, it's just reading, just reading them so they're um, acknowledging the receipt so the commission can accept them and the clock can start.
Gotcha.
Okay, under correspondence, all there is our meeting schedule for 2022. Take a look at that. Nothing under other matters and a couple of things under for reference only. Um, unless there's anything else, Commission members.
I have some, Mr. Chairman, I just have.
Go ahead.
Um, is the knee jame um, application coming back for the next meeting? Just curious.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be ready for the commission to approve December 1st.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Fifth. When's the next meeting? The first. I'm sorry, December 1st.
Yes. Anything else, Commission members? Hearing none.
Motion to adjourn.
There it is.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Yurice, seconded, Mr. Kyokyo. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.